This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levinson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos. Mayor Coombs, if we have a quorum.
Can I stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every being of us.
Any wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call. Public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at final call, public invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. So next we have the approval of minutes. I guess there's no minutes to approve from last time.
Gender revisions?
Yes.
Okay. We did add item 8A, which is the ordinance 2015-24 on second reading, which you pulled over from last week's meeting. So that was added after the agenda went out. It will be, as I said, item 8A.
Okay. Is there any talk from the city manager?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Council, we've had some questions regarding the recent rains and the runoff that folks are seeing in the river and just wanted to let everyone know. We have sent some information out today and we think we're in a good position at this point, but we are monitoring what happens with rainfall and runoff and we have the cameras active and the gauges active. In addition, we have started the stream monitoring program and also wanted to let council know that Dell and I will be going out tomorrow morning or midday to kind of, you know, look at the river and see the levels and really just do a quick assessment. So I know there's been some questions and we wanted to let everyone know that we're in good shape right now. We are watching it and we will let everyone know if something changes.
Alright, thank you. So next we have a special proclamation. Harold Dominguez, the city manager, and other staff members are here to receive the proclamation. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. A proclamation designating May 4th through May 10th, 2015, as Public Service Recognition Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas Public Service Recognition Week has been celebrated the first Monday through Sunday in May since 1985, it is set aside to better inform residents about the broad variety of services provided by the government and whereas the city of Longmont has a long and proud tradition of providing a wide variety of services to its residents such as police and fire protection, emergency response, trash and recycling collection, street construction and maintenance, traffic control, animal control, code enforcement, forestry, water and wastewater delivery and treatment, economic development support and services, library services, youth and senior programs, recreation programs, museum and cultural programs, park construction and maintenance, planning and engineering, courts and probation services, electric and telecommunications utilities, and whereas the employees who provide these direct services are supported by additional public service providers such as administrative support, personnel, custodians, clerks, fleet maintenance workers, risk management personnel, purchasing and contract employees, accountants, cashiers, payroll clerks, payroll clerks, they're really important, and human resource personnel, and whereas the tradition of outstanding public service is advanced every day in Longmont by more than 850 full-time and part-time municipal employees and an additional 630 to 680 temporary employees who work diligently to improve and sustain the quality of life for all of us who live in, work in, and visit the city of Longmont. And whereas the cities, whereas Longmont's public service employees dedicate their time, talent, and energy to serving our citizens and spend much of their free time participating in volunteer work and civic service projects and whereas it is important to recognize and salute the outstanding efforts made each year by the dedicated public service employees who provide these services. Now therefore, I, Dennis F. Coombs, Mayor and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby designate the week of May 4th through 10th, 2015, as Public Service Recognition Week in Longmont and urge all citizens to provide a word of encouragement or thanks to any public servant they encounter during this week.
So Mayor, if I may, I would like to say a few words. I want to say that we have a really amazing group of folks that work on behalf of the residents of our community and the work that they've been doing on a regular basis in a spirit of service. One of the things that we often talk about, that you all have heard a lot, is really the work that they've been doing on flood recovery, but there's a lot of truly amazing things happening right now. We have a division that's implementing the state's fastest fiber optic system to the home of business. And we also have our internal services group that's going through a major conversion for the human resource accounting and technology system. We obviously have the flood work. We have a lot of street work being done. If you just look at those major projects, any one of those in any given year is a tremendous amount of work for the organization. We have an organization that's doing that all at once. In addition, they're managing their day-to-day activities and they're doing extremely well in a period where we're in a high-growth period. And so the demands on all of those services are really peaking. And so what I wanted to do is take this opportunity to thank you for the proclamation, but also thank the organization for the work that they're doing. Truly amazing things are happening in Longmont and it's a product of everyone at work for us. Not only the 850 full-time folks, but those that we have as part-time and that are in the temporary seasonal positions. Everyone contributes to the success of our organization and the success of our community. So I wanted to give them a thank you at this time as well.
I guess I'd like to thank all the city employees also. Every employee I've ever run across has been extremely helpful. They're professional. They love their job. They love this community. They're involved in this community. And I'm just really proud to be a mayor of such quality employees of this city. And I'm sure the rest of the city council feels exactly the same way. Yeah, all the city employees are here.
Directors too.
I guess we all take a picture.
No, no, no. I'll take the picture. Give me the camera.
Yes.
I'll take the picture.
No.
So you're all moving over to this side.
We need to take a picture.
So you're all moving over to this side.
Okay, so now it's time for public invited to be heard. Tim Caffin?
Here.
Mr. Caffin?
Mr. Caffin?
Mayor, members of the city council, city staff. I wanted to announce that Channel Aid has received two tele-awards for our video on Longmont Strong Flood of 2013. Now this video highlighted the damage that happened to Longmont, but it really showed how the city staff came together to help combat what was happening and what the community did along with them to succeed in overcoming the flood damage. And so we won two tele-awards. One was a tele-award for public information. And the public information award, so that's this bronze tele-award here. And then we had a second tele-award, which is the People's Tele-Award for the same video. Two of them. One was viewed and judged by professionals throughout the country that are on the board of the Tele-Award Association. And there was over 12,000 entries.
Public invited to be heard, speakers who do not place their names on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at final call, public invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. So next we have the approval of minutes, I guess there's no minutes to approve from last time.
Gender revisions?
Yes.
Okay, we did add item 8A, which is the ordinance 2015-24 on second reading, which you pulled over from last week's meeting, so that was added after the agenda went out. It will be, as I said, item 8A.
Okay. Is there any talk from City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Council, we've had some questions regarding the recent rains and the runoff that folks are seeing in the river, and just wanted to let everyone know, we have sent some information out today, and we think we're in a good position at this point, but we are monitoring what happens with rainfall and runoff, and we have the cameras active and the gauges active. In addition, we have started the stream monitoring program, and also wanted to let Council know that Dale and I will be going out tomorrow morning or midday to kind of, you know, look at the river and see the levels and really just do a quick assessment. So I know there's been some questions, and we wanted to let everyone know that we're in good shape right now, that we are watching it, and we will let everyone know if something changes.
All right, thank you. So next we have a special proclamation. Harold Dominguez, City Manager, and other staff members are here to receive the proclamation. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. A proclamation designating May 4th through May 10th, 2015, as Public Service Recognition Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas Public Service Recognition Week has been celebrated the first Monday through Sunday in May since 1985, it is set aside to better inform residents about the broad variety of services provided by the government, and whereas the city of Longmont has a long and proud tradition of providing a wide variety of services to its residents such as police and fire protection, emergency response, trash and recycling collection, street construction and maintenance, traffic control, animal control, code enforcement, forestry, water and wastewater delivery and treatment, economic development support and services, library services, youth and senior programs, recreation programs, museum and cultural programs, park construction and maintenance, planning and engineering, courts and probation services, electric and telecommunications utilities, and whereas the employees who provide these direct services are supported by additional public service providers such as administrative support, personnel, custodians, clerks, fleet maintenance workers, risk management personnel, purchasing and contract employees, accountants, cashiers, payroll clerks, payroll clerks, they're really important, and human resource personnel, and whereas the tradition of outstanding public service is advanced every day in Longmont by more than 850 full-time and part-time municipal employees, and an additional 630 to 680 temporary employees who work diligently to improve and sustain the quality of life for all of us who live in, work in, and visit the city of Longmont, and whereas the cities, whereas Longmont's public service employees dedicate their time, talent, and energy to serving our citizens, and spend much of their free time participating in volunteer work and civic service projects, and whereas it is important to recognize and salute the outstanding efforts made each year by the dedicated public service employees who provide these services. Now therefore, I, Dennis Alcoms, Mayor, and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby designate the week of May 4th through 10th, 2015, as Public Service Recognition Week in Longmont, and urge all citizens to provide a word of encouragement or thanks to any public servant they encounter during this week.
So Mayor, if I may, I would like to say a few words. I want to say that we have a really amazing group of folks that work on behalf of the residents of our community, and the work that they've been doing on a regular basis in a spirit of service. One of the things that we often talk about, that you all have heard a lot, is really the work that they've been doing on flood recovery, but there's a lot of truly amazing things happening right now. We have a division that's implementing the state's fastest fiber optic system to the home of business, and we also have our internal services group that's going through a major conversion for the human resource accounting and technology system. We obviously have the flood work, we have a lot of street work being done. If you just look at those major projects, any one of those in any given year is a tremendous amount of work for the organization. We have an organization that's doing that all at once. In addition, they're managing their day-to-day activities, and they're doing extremely well in a period where we're in a high-growth period, and so the demands on all of those services are really peaking, and so what I wanted to do is take this opportunity to thank you for the proclamation, but also thank the organization for the work that they're doing. Truly amazing things are happening in Longmont, and it's a product of everyone at work for us, not only the 850 full-time folks, but those that we have as part-time and that are in the temporary seasonal positions. Everyone contributes to the success of our organization and the success of our community, so I wanted to give them a thank you at this time as well.
I guess I'd like to thank all the city employees also. Every employee I've ever run across has been extremely helpful. They're professional, they love their job, they love this community, they're involved in this community, and I'm just really proud to be a mayor of such quality employees of this city, and I'm sure the rest of the City Council feels exactly the same way. Yeah, all the city employees are here.
I guess we all take a picture.
No, 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 I'll take the picture. Give me the camera.
Yeah.
I'll take the picture.
No.
So you're all moving over to this side.
Okay, so now it's time for public invited to be heard.
received two tele-awards for our video on Longmont Strong Flood of 2013. Now this video highlighted the damage that happened to Longmont, but it really showed how the city staff came together to help combat what was happening, and what the community did along with them to succeed in overcoming the flood damage. And so we won two tele-awards. One was a tele-award for public information, and the public information award, so that's this bronze tele-award here, and then we had a second tele-award, which is the People's Tele Award for the same video. Two of them, one was viewed and judged by professionals throughout the country that are on the board of the Tele Award Association, and there was over 12,000 entries, so we won the, we won two bronze awards. So the community did great, the city staff did great. Special recognition needs to go to my production manager, Don Gerton, and to Rigoleo. Together, they put together this entire video, and it just turned out incredible. A lot of you have seen it, if not, we're going to be rebroadcasting it. Thank you.
Congratulations. That's the hearing, Ken.
Right, well, I'm here to request a ban on cosmetic lawn chemicals throughout our public parks.
Ma'am, could you give your name and address for the record?
Sure, Leslie, and my address is 326 Collier Street. Okay. On cosmetic lawn chemicals throughout our public parks, schools, and daycare facilities. In the past several years, researchers have come forward linking pesticides and herbicides to autism, Parkinson's, cancer, declining animal populations, and even suicide, which is a huge problem in this town, and yet we continue to dump neurotoxins over the majority of soil without a second thought. Our Parks Department leaves warning flags in most treated areas for about 48 hours. I was assured that children and dogs would be perfectly safe returning to the area after flag removal. There are 16 products sprayed over public parks and trails. I called up the manufacturer of Erasaline 4 Pro and was directed to their local expert. I asked point-blank what chemical change renders Erasaline safe 48 hours after application. I was told that there was no real chemical change, it was simply more difficult to extract once it was in soil. I then asked why the soil down chemical is safer than it would be out of the bottle. His explanation was that Erasaline is safe either way, and that a person would need to drink a glass in order for it to pose any danger. The hazardous substance fact sheet posted by the New Jersey Department of Health says verbatim, Erasaline may be a carcinogen in humans, since it has been shown to cause thyroid cancer in animals. Many scientists believe there is no safe level of exposure to a carcinogen. There is also limited evidence that Erasaline may damage the developing fetus in animals. The soil half-life of Erasaline is 20 days. I called the manufacturer Pendulum and was told the same thing, no chemical change occurs, but it's just harder to remove from the soil. The soil half-life of the active ingredient Pendamethylene is 90 days, and just like Erasaline, it is also classified as a possible human carcinogen by the EPA. 24D is the most controversial among the chemicals used in our parks. It has been linked to heightened cancer rates in both dogs and humans. It has shown up in the breast milk of nursing mothers, and the EPA has singled out one- and two-year-old children as being at the highest risk of harm from 24D. The half-life is 60 days. Keep in mind that in addition to the active ingredients, these products contain dozens of inert chemicals that aren't on the label. Don't let the word inert fool you. One inert ingredient in Roundup is known to be deadly to human embryonic placental and umbilical cord cells, so everything else in our parks is a mystery. So we are literally spraying known carcinogens, neurotoxins, and otherwise highly toxic substances over the soil of family gathering areas, and those substances will remain in that soil for as long as their half-lives dictate, most of which that I researched ranged between one and three months. As the mom of a two-year-old, I can't begin to tell you how many children I see playing specifically in the treated areas on a daily basis, such as the tree bases. They dig, collect egg crumbs, and put everything in their mouths. The American Academy of Pediatrics has warned people about the links between pediatric cancers and developmental problems.
Unfortunately, if you interrupt.
Okay, all right.
You're welcome to come back or stay a second.
No, that's, I pretty much mean my point, I think. More than anything, though, it just needs to be removed from our children's areas. Okay. I'm sorry.
Tonight you've got for first reading a huge additional appropriations ordinance, and there isn't any way the city understand, or there isn't any way this City Council understands the finances of this city, or has even made any effort to try to understand the finances of this city. And the information I'm asking for, I have asked Teresa Malloy, who works for Mr. Golden, who's the Director of Finance. Every time I ask for this, I'm told I can just go jump in the lake, and I think it's really because our Director of Finance doesn't know, have a clue about the finances of this You are got this handout. This is information that you would have to know. I'm just zeroing in on the water funds, and what I'd like you to do is just update the water funds, because we've had, what Mr. Dominguez is saying is, we had some huge amount of money. He's saying we had about $125 million that we didn't know we had four months ago when we did our original budget. He's saying, oh, we just discovered we had another $125 million. And there isn't any way, if you pass this budget appropriations, there isn't any way you can spend it. It'll just be surplus that goes forward to next year. You need to start reading some of these budget matters in these ordinances, you'll see that it's all carryover from that budget that wasn't spent last year, and we've already gone through four months of this year, so we'll just carry it over to next year. And if you give me the answers to these questions, which are, these are questions you all should have asked, in the case of Councilmember Levison, she probably should have asked these questions 10 years ago, and the city wouldn't have wasted so much of our money. If you look at how this applies to our water rates, you could have lowered our water rates by 50%. In fact, we have such a huge surplus with these phony, false budgets that Mr. Dominguez is putting in front of you, and that you, you know, you won't even put in an hour's worth of effort to try to understand it. If you don't understand it, you'd see, we could have three utilities for a year, and then just start up at the beginning of next year and be in perfectly fine shape. Everything that you've been told about our water rates is a bunch of baloney. And I would like you to put the answers to these questions on the agenda before you have the meeting for the final reading, so the public can at least see what's going on, even if none of you are interested.
Stacy Alexander?
My name is Stacy Alexander, and I live at 1317 Washburn Avenue in Erie, Colorado, in Boulder County. I'm the Director for Flatiron's Responsible Energy Action. We are a new grassroots organization consisting of a diverse group of people from across Boulder County that care deeply about our environment, our health, our schools, and our children's future. We all came together from different walks of life. We have businesspeople from small and large companies, teachers, single moms, veterans, and a lot of retired folks, and many of those who work in the oil and gas industry. We've all come together to facilitate a rational discussion about the oil and gas industry, and what it means to the quality of our life. FREA members, I shortened Flatiron's Responsible Energy Action to FREA because it's very long, we believe that we can protect Colorado's natural gifts responsibly and extract the affordable and abundant energy in our local community as well. After all, I live here, and we all live in the shadow of the beautiful Flatirons and Longspike as well, and this corner of Colorado is important to us, too. It's our goal to be a resource to our friends and our neighbors and the community members about oil and gas development, because we all deserve affordable, reliable, and safe energy. We are advocating for a responsible increase domestic production, which keeps prices low, and this is a positive outcome for your city as it lowers costs for your budgets and your heating and your municipal buildings, your vehicle fuel costs, asphalt costs, and fertilizer, for example. It's a positive outcome for our community and families, too. Families need affordable energy to heat their house, cook their meals, wash their clothes, drive their kids to practice, or access the internet for homework. We are not against alternative energy in any way. In fact, oil and gas supports these types of alternatives as well. Fiber glass wind turbines and the petroleum products that lubricate them just helped Colorado become number seven nationwide in the number of new clean energy jobs. Oil and gas products work when the wind isn't blowing, and they work when the sun isn't shining. I'm not asking for anything tonight, I just wanted to raise awareness of who I am and what we are, and what the mission for FREA is. I would like to come back with updates and some of the future events that we're going to have, and news about events and education that we're going to make available. We have a Facebook page, it's Flatirons Responsible Energy Action, and I want to thank you for your service and your civic duty, and for giving me a chance to introduce myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that ends first call, public invited to be heard.
Mayor, oh, sorry. The first item on your agenda is the second, continuation of the ordinance on second reading, as ordinance 2015-24, Billford Ordinance approving the rebate of development-related fees with Wylund Incorporated.
And I'd also like to state on record that both Bonnie and I watched the very short public hearing on the item last time. Yeah. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, since we've had our public hearing, I move ordinance 2015-24.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes 7 to 0.
The next item on your agenda is the consent agenda. Item 9A is ordinance 2015-25, a Billford Ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2015. Public hearing, second reading is scheduled for May 19th. Item 9B is ordinance 2015-26, a Billford Ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 4.12 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Purchasing. Public hearing, second reading is scheduled for May 19th. Item 9C is ordinance 2015-27, a Billford Ordinance approving the vacation of an easement north of 10th Avenue and west of Aspen Street, generally located in the Dale Acres subdivision. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for May 19th. Item 9D is ordinance 2015-28, a Billford Ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of an electric easement generally located south of Kansas Avenue and west of South Pratt Parkway. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for May 19th. Item 9E is Resolution 2015-33, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the State Board of Land Commissioners for the lease of state trust lands. Item 9F is Resolution 2015-34, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for environmental sustainability grant funding. Item 9G is adopt the city of Longmont's 2015 through 16 water supply and drought management plan, and item 9H is approve the city sponsorship for Longmont Startup Week totaling $1,000 from the budgeted economic development funds, and staff does not have a need to pull on the poll.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. If the council doesn't have anything to pull.
I would like to ask Mayor a quick question on item 9E.
You want to pull it?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bagley, you have something to pull? To answer the questions from the public? I can answer that real fast. And it's interesting that gentleman didn't stay, because the $122 million is in 36 funds, so let's be clear about that. Do you still wish to pull that?
Yeah, I still want. We had it.
Councilmember Santos? All right, Bagley.
That's all right. He's a good-looking guy. I can handle being Councilmember Santos. I called Councilmember Levison, Councilmember Finley last week, and vice versa. I was all over the place, guys. You don't want me, you do not, you do not want me running that microphone. It's, it's, power just went to my head. So anyway, the, thank you, Mayor Coombs, yeah, remember, whenever a member of the public comes forward and makes an accusation publicly, I think it's only fair that we have Mr. Golden. I would like to know the answer. As Councilmember Santos puts out, it's 36 funds. Why does $122 million just pop all of a sudden into additional appropriations? I believe I understand the answer, but I will, I will, I will allow the question to be asked, do you have a clue, Mr. Gordon, or, Mr. Golden? And then we will, it shouldn't take too long, because I think you have a clue. I'm rolling the dice here.
Councilmember Santos?
Mayor Coombs and I move the consent agenda minus A and E.
Second.
Okay, let's vote on the consent agenda minus A and E. Okay, that passes 7 to 0.
And item A is the additional appropriations ordinance, and I believe Jim Golden is coming down to address that question.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I will answer the question. So, so you do have, yes, additional appropriations ordinance in front of you, once a year. We do bring appropriations ordinances to you monthly throughout the year, and once a year, we bring to you a carryover ordinance. So there's a, a lot of funds that were appropriated in 2014 that were not expended. Most of these are on capital projects, but there's a lot of individual uses that are identified. I think there's about 14, 15 pages in his council communication that is detailing in some summary fashion those dollars by fund, by those many funds. I'll give you a couple, one big example is, we have a bond issue that was approved by the voters for the sewer enterprise utility. We had three financings that we did last year, and the bond issue for the sewer fund was decided to be, I want to put this, of the least importance, let's say, at least from a timing fashion, and so we will be doing that this year, and so we're actually trying to coordinate that with the expenditure, the final expenditure of some construction funds that already are in existence. You want to time your bond issue so that you're, you're not getting your money too early because of arbitrage issue and things like that? So, so that's a big amount. That's, I think, 28, $28 million of that $122 million ordinance. And then on top of that, if you go through, you see the sewer fund has got other capital projects that were budgeted already in 2014, so there's almost $40 million just in the sewer fund alone. There's $17.7 million, I'm sorry, yeah, $17.7 million in the street fund for capital projects that were budgeted. So another large one is the Village of the Peaks. So we had a $27.5 million certificates of participation issued last year, budgeted in full. We obviously have not expended all those dollars, we have to carry them over, reappropriate, because all of our appropriations, except for in one fund, the city's public improvement fund, all of our appropriations lapse at the end of the fiscal year, and so the council needs to reappropriate those, to put them in place. We don't put them in our original budget, we don't know what they're going to be until after the year is closed out. That's why it takes us four to five months to bring you this ordinance to add them back into the 15 budget.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, and having been on council for a while and knowing that when the fiscal year finally ends, there are funds that need to be rolled over into it, and had that resident just read the packet like I did, and do spend time on, a lot of these are carryover, and it does say in there, the little, what is it, at sign, it says, represents carryover expenses that were included in the 2014 budget but not completed by the end of the year. This category represents the majority of the funds in this appropriation. You know, it's great to be able to throw accusations, but if you're not going to stay and listen to the responses, that's why I was just going to move it, Councilmember Bagley. But Jen, thanks for the clarification. I move ordinance 2015-25.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Bagley?
Thanks, Mayor Coombs. Just, just to reiterate, what I heard was, every year, city charter says that we need to appropriate funding, and so just, we raised the money, now we have to agree again to spend it. So I just take great offense. You can, you can throw stones at me, but I think our staff does a great job, in particular our finance departments. Thank you for putting us together.
Okay, that passes.
Well, I actually tried to get this answered, uh, on fine during the day, but I didn't hear back from, uh, Mr., uh, Wolford. Um, so anyway, uh, I was just curious, uh, if I look at the rental, I mean, I understand why we want this piece of property, because we don't want cattle grazing on our drinking water that flows into, I mean, that, that's pretty obvious. Uh, but I was just curious how the, the rental agreement was agreed upon, you know, year one, it's six thousand, then it went to seven thousand. So it's not, it graduated, I mean, it's, it's increasing by a thousand per year, but it's not like a percentage increase, you know, the percentage increase is actually decreasing, you know, it's like fifteen percent the first year. But anyway, um, I was just curious how you arrived and what's going to happen after year six. Is year six, and we're going to get into a new lease agreement where it's going to be eleven thousand, twelve thousand? I was just curious.
Uh, Mayor Coombs and members of council, Dale Rannamaker, um, Public Works Natural Resources. So, um, first of all, Mayor, this is a, um, a lease that we've been working out with the state land board now for twenty years. Um, frankly, our long-term goal would be to own the property. Um, we haven't been able to sort of get to a sale price with them yet. Um, and, you know, this is eighty acres of ground. It is a bargain to get it for six thousand dollars. I'm not sure how many other areas we can lease for, you know, eighty acres of ground for that amount of money. I don't think there's any magic to the number. I think the number goes up a thousand dollars a year, probably for the state to show their fiduciary responsibility of getting some return on their property, which would probably be commensurate with what they would have derived from a, from a rancher to graze. And so, um, again, it, this is, we consider this to be an important parcel, given its proximity to Longmont Reservoir, which is the intake for the primary water supply to the city, that we, um, work to preserve it and to keep it as pristine and clean as we can.
Thank you. I guess our move, uh, ordinance, uh, resolution are twenty fifteen dash thirty-three. Okay, let's vote. Can you get that pass to seven to zero?
Coombs, that was the last item.
So we have no general business items, so I guess it's time for final call. Public invited to be heard. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to come and speak at this time? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close. Final call. Public invited to be heard. Now it's time for Mayor and Councilmembers. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Glad to have you back.
Thank you.
Although Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Bagley did a very good job leading us last week, but, uh, it looks like you, you had a very nice vacation with your family. So welcome back and welcome back to Councilmember Finley. Um, Councilmember Finley usually has a business of the week, so I, I'm going to steal a little bit, a business of the week from her. So Frontier Natural Meats in Longmont on Seventeenth. Um, they have, uh, bison, um, elk, uh, different type of free-range beef, that, uh, natural fed grasses. My wife is allergic to beef, so we've been transitioning to bison. So went there. It's a local business. In fact, it's, uh, run and I think owned by Richard Honey, who was with the well. Um, in fact, we got, he gave me the, what he called the nickel tour and, um, and he goes, God, I know you. I said, you know, we know each other. I'm, I'm Gabe Santos with the city council. He was on, I said, how's the well going? The well's going very well. Well, the well's going very well. But anyway, very punny. Scott Rocha would be, would be happy about that. Boy, we do miss him. Um, but Frontier Natural Meats in Longmont, um, it's a local business. Um, I would suggest if you're looking for that type of, if you eat meat, I know you don't, Mayor, but they also have chickens as well and turkeys. So, uh, Frontier Natural Meats.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, and I don't mind you, uh, doing that at all, because I think , uh, all of our small businesses especially should be mentioned in public, because they, they are the backbone of our community. Uh, I want to remind everyone that this weekend is Mother's Day. And should you have a mother, and you all do, or did, um, you should acknowledge that by purchasing her some fine flowers at the Longmont Florist, or some fine chocolates at Robin's Chocolates, or, or taking her out to dinner at one of our many fine restaurants here in town. But, uh, remember to thank her, or you wouldn't be here.
Councilmember? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, well, I got a mysterious package from somewhere I had, didn't know was coming, and it's always one of those things, it's a ten-pound box, and do I open it or not, right? But everything goes on the, well, it turns out it was from Google. Uh, I'd signed up to put, uh, Longmont on the Map as a program that, uh, Google's running, Put Your City on the Map. It was, uh, at NLC in Austin, Texas, last year, and I, I signed Longmont up, and they sent this promotional package today. And so, you know, it's like, I got notification, I was going to get a package yesterday, and it's like, okay, where's it from? Nobody knew, so it came to, and I came over today, and it, uh, because it was from Google, I figured I could open it. Well, it turns out, you know, this, this is a good program. What it is, it's making sure that your local businesses are on Google search engines, that the information is accurate, so that people can actually find your business. And it's kind of an outreach for Google to come out and say, you know, we know we make mistakes, let's find them. And so I, I feel like it's, it's a good program, and we ought to be, um, participating, or at least maybe we ought to turn this over to LEC, because they, and let them know about the program, so that we can have corrections made to anything in our Google searches that are affecting our local business. So that's what that's about, and, uh, we didn't blow anything up today. Councilmember Allison?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, that's real, um, interesting. I just want to give a, a short report on, uh, the Women in Municipal Government Conference in St. Paul last week. Um, lots of good speakers and, uh, um, some interesting, a good trainer on, um, kind of, uh, mind-body connections and also, um, social media training, which was very interesting. Had an interesting, there were a couple of corporate sponsors there, um, uh, someone from Comcast, and we got into a little discussion about, um, his opinions about municipalization. And he knew I was in the room, and he knew Longmont was in the room, and so I could not let him go with, with what he said. So we did engage in a little back and forth about municipalization. I also want to, um, uh, report that I went back online to follow the discussion on the LinkedIn blog on uni broadband and wireless, and Scott Converse had jumped right into the conversation on that article to correct this perception. Apparently, the article, um, that was posted was, uh, posted, um, uh, by a writer that was supported by industry, and it was kind of one of those planted articles. So I am very pleased, and I want to give a shout out to Mr. Converse for jumping in there right away. And, uh, that then posted a bunch more comments that showed that this article was really a placement by the industry. And then, uh, a couple of other, um, things I want, I was not, I was not able to attend Cinco de Mayo, but, um, I understood it was, uh, a very, um, good event again. And so since today is Cinco de Mayo, happy Cinco de Mayo, everybody. Um, I also want to draw council's attention to the email that, um, Mayor Coombs sent us with the transportation, um, related, uh, points with the study and requests for funding for, um, the, uh, a consultant to go and do a, um, holistic look at what a community ecopass would have, um, and what advantages, disadvantages. So I think that we should take a look at the information that Mayor Coombs has sent. He's participated in, um, how many meetings was it, Mayor?
Uh, two.
Two meters, and there's another one coming up. And the total cost, uh, to Longmont would be about, uh, fifteen thousand dollars. And I carefully studied the scope of work, and I think just the raw data that the scope of work would yield for Longmont, I don't think we could get the same amount of data, um, especially with what, um, the look at the total operations for RTD for that amount of money. So I want to move that we direct staff to, um, get that information off the, the email and put an item on our, can you put it on the May nineteenth agenda, the next regular agenda? So if we want to allocate some funds, we could. And would you please also see what possible sources of funding for that fifteen thousand dollar, um, uh, portion we could do? So that's my motion. Is that a consensus? I, I didn't know if you wanted to make a motion.
I'm trying to figure it out.
Is it consensus? Okay, all right.
Yeah, we can get it.
Yeah, so if we can do that, that would be absolutely great. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bagley? Uh, Mayor Coombs, I wasn't going to say anything, but since I had a thought, I might as well open my mouth like usual. The, uh, just by way of public service announcement, and what I really mean by that is to brown nose with my wife, Cinco de Mayo is not Mexican Independence Day. It is celebrating, it is, is it, is it, it is an excuse to have a cultural and diversity celebration, to celebrate technically the Battle of Puebla, when a small Mexican pueblo defeated the French. That is what. Yes, that is Cinco, that is, that is, that, that is Cinco de Mayo. And so, uh, just, just, I'm letting my wife know that I'm, I'm supporting her and that it is not Mexican Independence Day. I should get some, some snuggles tonight for that, September seventeenth. I am married and live with a bunch of Mexicans.
Well, I'd like to take this opportunity to, I think, uh, Brian for running the meeting last week, and thank city council for, you know, keeping the city running and everything. I had a great time. I went to Costa Rica. It was one of these, uh, TLC Learning Center vacation packages. I signed a bid up for a fundraiser, and I got, got stuck with it. Probably paid about two Xs, what it, what it would cost me just to go buy it myself, but it was for a good cause, and just had a really good time, so. So if you don't have an opportunity to ever go to Costa Rica, it's really a beautiful country. I had a great time, and it's got a great culture. Their broadband sucks, so. But anyway, it was fun. Uh, I guess that's it. Uh, city manager, any comments?
Mayor Council, I actually have a couple more comments. Um, so you all received an email about the employee appreciation event this Saturday, um, and would, again, like to extend invitation to the council. I think it's a great event, really thanking everyone for, uh, the work they do. Um, and so I just wanted to reiterate that now. And if you want to attend, please give us a call and let us know, because I think there's actually time slots that, for food that we're having to, um, allocate and make sure we have enough at that point in time. The other thing that I felt to mention is that one of the things that we're also rolling out now is some work that was done by, um, a, a culture committee and, and that was composed of individuals from throughout the organization, sort, where they said, here's the type of culture we want in our organization. And so you'll be seeing that information come out in, in the work that we're doing. This is really, um, what we've been talking about is this is their organization, and they put a lot of effort into it, and, um, we brought out thirteen attributes, and we will be talking to you more about that as we continue moving forward. And then I think within a couple of months, the other, um, the Training Task Force Committee is bringing out a robust training program for the organization, um, so we can give everyone the skills they need to perform at the level they want to, but also provide people with skills, um, if they want to promote within the organization. So those are some things that are, we're tying into this process.
I did forget the last one, but I'm glad, um, Frontline's just having their, um, graduation. And, uh, unfortunately, I'm committed to go to a best friend's birthday party, um, so I won't be able, but I hope someone from council can go, because it's a, it's a great event, and it's, it's a lot of fun. Some, I believe it's seven o'clock. And there's some, really some tear-jerking stories about what some of these young kids went through to graduate. So, uh, you know, you might want to bring some Kleenex issues with you if you go. So that's it for me. City attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.